I'm your moderator, Debbie Kay, from the League of Women Voters of Portland. I have information for our audience in the room and for viewers who will be watching this later. Portland Council PTA, Community and Parents for Public Schools, and the Portland Public School District have partnered with the League of Women Voters to host this forum. We also thank Portland Public Schools for its help in presenting the forum. Please silence your phones and other electronic devices. Audience members may not use any type of image or sound recording device during the forum. As time allows, we will welcome audience questions, legibly written, please, on three-by-five cards. Volunteers are on hand to provide and collect the index cards. Please hold them up for a League member to take. This forum is being recorded from the Blanchard Education Service Center by Portland Public Schools Education Media Services, for which we are grateful. To view the forum online or to find the broadcast schedule, visit the League's website, L W V P D X dot org. The candidates in this forum are running in the May 19th special election. In addition to the school board election, the ballot will include candidates for other local offices, including Mount Hood and Portland Community College Boards. In-depth candidate information is available for this and all elections in the Voters' Guide, published by the League of Women Voters. You can pick up your own copy of the Voters' Guide at the table in the lobby or view it online at our website, L W V P D X dot org. Paper copies of the Voters' Guide are available at the Multnomah County Elections Office and at Multnomah County Library Branches. Also, to see information about the candidates and issues for your personal ballot, go to voteforwomone.org. Enter your street address, and the Voters' Guide information for only those items on your ballot, by geography, will appear. You can also access this from our website under Voter Resources. Election Day is May 19th, 2015. Ballots will be mailed to voters beginning April 29th. Completed ballots must be received at an official drop-off site no later than 8:00 p.m. on Tuesdays, May 19th. Postmarks do not count. The last day to register to vote is next Tuesday, April 28th. If you are already registered and need to change your address or something else on your registration, you may do so almost until Election Day. Please contact the Multnomah County Elections Office for more information. Candidates for our school board run for office from geographic zones but are elected at large. Registered voters will vote for one candidate in each of the four zones. Now, let me introduce the candidates. They are seated in the same order as they appear on the ballot. All candidates for school board were invited to participate in this evening's forum. The unopposed candidate from Zone 7, Mike Rosen, is not here. We have with us, from your left to right, from Zone 1, Julie Esparza Brown and Andrew Davidson; from Zone 2, Jose Gonzalez, John Sweeney, Paul Anthony, and Emma Rusick-Williams; from Zone 3, Wes Soderback, Gretchen Hollins, Bobby Regan, and Amy Carlson-Constam. Tonight, we will ask the candidates questions developed by the League and our forum partners, Community and Parents for Public Schools, and Portland Council PTA. The questions will address several themes. Candidates running within the same zone will all respond to the same question, but questions will differ between the zones. Candidates will have 60 seconds for each response. Our timekeepers are League member Brenda Smith and Kattlin Gable student Liv Phillips. Thank you both. Can you see them? Okay. They will signal with a 15-second yellow warning, and then a red stop when the speaker's time has expired. Now, let us begin. Audience members, because this is a very full program, we ask that you please hold your applause until the end of the forum. We will open the forum with one-minute statements from each candidate. We've asked the candidates to use this time to articulate their educational vision for the school board. We will begin with Ms. Esparza Brown. Please.
Buenas noches. Good evening. I'm Dr. Julie Esparza Brown. Whoops. Seventy-five years ago, my father, in Southern California, a native Spanish speaker, and the children in his community were rounded up to go to an Americanization school where they were robbed of their native language and taught English.
Kind of. In the process of learning English, he was identified as a child with an intellectual disability that he outgrew when he learned English. However, 75 years later, we still see educational disparities in our outcomes and the low graduation rates for children of color and those with disabilities. As a school board member, I have three main priorities. That would be to increase the graduation rates for all students, particularly children of color and with disabilities, to make sure that children reach those third-grade literacy benchmarks, and to efficiently and effectively use our resources to provide equitable opportunities for all Portland Public School children.
Thank you. Andrew Davidson.
Good evening. My name is Andrew Davidson, and I'm running for the Portland School Board in Zone 1. I'm running because PPS must do better. I served just one year ago on this dais as the student representative, representing the over 48,000 students that make up Portland Public Schools. In my role as a board member, I was frustrated by a stagnant pace and lack of student focus. As a student, I directly experienced both the successes and the failures of the school board, and saw firsthand what students go through every day outside of the sights and minds of most board members. And as a community member, I have experienced the anger that comes from having a school board that is unreceptive to and out of touch with the needs and voices of the community. I am running for the school board to use my knowledge, energy, and abilities to be the advocate Portland students deserve.
Thank you. Jose Gonzalez.
Yes. My name is Jose Gonzalez, and I'm executive director and founder of the Miracle Theater Group. I'm Mexican-American and a proud 1970 graduate of Benson High School. At Benson, I learned vocational experiences and combined them with university studies to steer my career in the theater, from carpenter to producer. In 1985, I established Milagro with my wife on a nickel and a dime, a heart and hope, and raised two kids, who both went through the Portland Public Schools, and established Milagro as the foremost Latino arts organization in the region. I strongly support career technical education and integrated arts education programs in our schools. I know what it takes to manage a company, steer it through thick and thin, and make some difficult decisions. I have strong community support and involvement, and one more thing, involvement, and I plan to work with my fellow board members.
I'm sorry, I have to ask you to stop. Thank you. John Sweeney.
I'm John Sweeney, a native Oregonian. Lived in Portland most of my life, and went through Portland Public Schools. However, did graduate from Coopasaki High School on Okinawa. And my big focus is to reduce or greatly end the high school dropout rate. High school is really the key to somebody's future, because, like in my case, I finished high school, and then later on, when it's time to go to college, because I was a high school graduate, I showed up and started college. But those who do not finish high school, would show up, say, in their 30s or 40s, would have to take extra special classes, which would cost them both time and money. And they don't need to have those delays in their 30s and 40s. And the other thing is, we run from a zone, but we have to run district-wide, and I'd like to change it to so the fact that you're running for office, that you turn around, you run in the district. Period.
Thank you. Paul Anthony.
Good evening. I'm Paul Anthony, and I'm running for the Portland School Board, representing Zone 2. Thank you for the opportunity to address the public. I'm a management and finance professional. I'm used to working with budgets and collaborating with community members, not public speaking. I'm running because I have three children in the public schools. My children have had fabulous teachers and terrific programs, but that has often been the result of many struggles for the resources our classrooms need. I do not think children's education should depend on luck or their parents' ability to navigate complex systems. We can do better for all our children. I will work with the district to improve management so that it's focused on our classrooms and to collaborate with the community. We have to return to a well-rounded, comprehensive education in this district, increasing opportunities across the board. When we do that, we are going to see student achievement and graduation rates go up because they keep our children engaged, fire their imaginations, and keep them in school actively learning.
Thank you. Emma Rusick-Williams.
Hi, everyone. I'm Emma Rusick-Williams, and I'm running for the Portland Public School Board in Zone 2. And I'm running because I want for my son what every parent wants for their child, and that's the best opportunities. And those opportunities start with a solid education. I promise to work hard to see that our public schools and our educators have the resources they need to tap into the potential of every child. I think that I can be a positive and a proactive force on the board, and that we can all work together to make the school system one that we all, as parents, as community members, as taxpayers, and as Portlanders can be proud of. It's time for us to recommit ourselves to public education. Our sense of community and our economy depend on it. Thank you.
Thank you. Wes Soderback.
I'm Wes Soderback, running in Zone 3. That's generally Lincoln High School. My family's lived in the area for about 100 years. My parents went to Portland Public Schools. I went to Portland Public Schools. My father worked for Portland Public Schools as a teacher and in the maintenance department for over 35 years. I came out of Portland Public Schools in what was a great era. We had bands, and we had football teams. We had every extracurricular activity you could possibly imagine. It was really a great time. Since then, we have been in decline. I would like to get this thing turned around and get back to the greatness we deserve.
Thank you. Gretchen Hollins.
My name is Gretchen Hollins. I have two children who have graduated from PPS. My husband's a teacher at Grant High School. I have a master's degree in public administration from Portland State University, and I've managed, for seven years, I've worked in Portland Public Schools, at a job I love, by the way. There's a lot of talk about the high school graduation rates, and it's important that all of our students earn a diploma, but what should a high school diploma mean? When our students walk across the stage, I want our graduates to feel a sense of community and to know their place in it. They need tools, knowing how to read and write well, but let's also teach them how to find resources, how to trust their judgment, and how to be good consumers of media. They need concrete skills in math and science, but they also need to be able to adapt to a career that does not yet exist. We need our schools, and particularly our high-poverty schools, to address this. We need to teach skills like resilience, resourcefulness, and teamwork. I want our graduates to be ready for the world. Thank you.
Thank you. Bobby Regan.
Hi, everyone. I'm Bobby Regan on the Portland School Board. Thanks for being here tonight. Portlanders care about our schools, and we all have hopes and dreams and concerns. For me, the single most important thing for students is what happens in the classroom. I have a track record of leadership, delivering results for kids, and getting more resources into our classroom. I am running because I want more and better results for our students and teachers. With my leadership to date, Portland Public Schools has increased our graduation rate 17% in the past five years. We've added 600 teachers, lowering class sizes, and providing more support to at-risk students. We've added days, including increasing instructional time. We've expanded career and vocational classes, banned and outdoor school. And as chair of the board's audit committee, we're bringing back an independent performance auditor to help ensure resources get to the classroom. I look forward to tonight.
Thank you. Amy Carlson-Constam.
My name is Amy Carlson-Constam. I am a parent of three sons in Portland Public Schools currently. I've been active in their classrooms and in their schools for the last dozen years, working at all their events, youth sports, PTA, serving on my local school foundations, also serving as a citywide leader as chair of the Portland Schools Foundation, and all hands raised, as chair of the Equity Grants Committee for the Schools Foundation, and working on levies and bonds for the last 10 years in this community. I also currently serve as the board chair of Open Meadow, which runs alternative school programs that serve our kids most at risk in our community. I am a graduate of Portland Public Schools, kindergarten through high school. When I went to school here, it was known as one of the best urban school districts in the nation. Unfortunately, that's no longer the case. I am looking to bring a sense of accountability at the board level for results for our students in the classroom, and I think we need stronger leadership.
Thank you. Thank you all for your openings. Our first question will be for candidates from Zones 1 and 3, beginning with Ms. Hollins. And here's the question. The school board receives most of its information, oh, I'm sorry, and this round of questions will deal with community participation. The school board receives most of its information from district staff but is ultimately accountable to residents and voters. How will you include input from residents and voters in your decision-making process?
Well, this is a great time to increase public participation in the process. While it's fantastic that everyone came out tonight, we also have the means for surveys like the one that recently went out through Oregon Kitchen Table. I would like to see more use of the social media as a two-way street, not just let us tell you all about the things that we're doing now. I think the Channel 28 is a great, and the streaming is a great way to communicate with people. So I would just, I would increase that focus using the new technologies that we have available to make sure that different voices are heard.
Thank you. I'll be happy to repeat any question anytime, so Ms. Regan, you're up next.
Oh, great. Thank you. Having community input is urgently important for the school board. I think over the last few years, our current board leadership has stifled that a little bit. I tell you that the way that I get the best communication is when I'm actually out visiting schools, which I do all the time. I visit schools, I visit classrooms, I talk with teachers and principals. Recently, we have started a process where we are doing town hall meetings, and I think that's a very effective way for us to be communicating. We just did one last night at Franklin High School, and it was a great interchange around the budget, where there was a back-and-forth that is important for us to be hearing, but it's also important for the community to understand where we're coming from as we're making decisions. I also appreciated the fact that it wasn't a 15- or 30-minute presentation with just a couple of minutes for dialogue. It was a complete, full dialogue in that town hall format, so I think that's a good direction for us to be going in.
Thank you. Ms. Constam, or Carlson-Constam, excuse me.
Either way. I think it's really important for the school district to realize that the district itself cannot be all things to all students, and in order to really serve our students well, we need to have strong relationships with our community-based organizations that know our students, know their families, speak their languages, are in their communities every day. And I think Portland Public Schools has some strong partnerships and works on fostering those, but I think we hear from our community partners that it is often unnecessarily hard to work with the district, and there are barriers that, there are barriers that keep us from really serving our students as well as we could. So I really want to strengthen community partnerships. I want to invite volunteers into our school. And I also think it's important, as a parent, to be an active part of school communities, hearing feedback every day, and I would want to focus on improving the district's complaint process and ability to facilitate and resolve concerns coming from the parent community.
Thank you. Mr. Soderback.
I'm a director of the Benson Alumni Association, and we have a program that we're sort of the middlemen. If the community has something they want to come forward, they can come to us and let us know. We can let them know where they could go to get the information. We don't actually fight people's battles for them. We can provide an avenue to get what they need to get. The program's been going on three, four years now. It seems to work well. We're partnering with the community in a lot of different ways. That could be a pilot project.
Thank you. We're going to use the same question, moving on to Zone 1, and the question is, "The school board receives most of its information from district staff but is ultimately accountable to residents and voters. How will you include input from residents and voters in your decision-making process?" Beginning with Mr. Davidson.
Thank you. I think in terms of engaging the public, the town halls that have previously been spoken about are a great idea. Unfortunately, I don't feel like communication about those town halls has been adequate, so engaging with the public better in that sense. Social media is a great tool, but again, it doesn't reach some of the communities that we need to be reaching to. So, you know, whether we're using newspapers or other publications to do that in those communities, that's a great way to do that, but there's also a longer-term part to this, I think. And that is, if we truly want people to be engaged in our conversations, we have to start treating people with honesty and respect. And that's something that, you know, it's a lot easier said than done, but we have to start doing it, and we have to start doing it now.
Thank you. Ms. Esparza Brown.
Great. I agree with my opponent that we have to be careful in thinking of how we're going to engage our communities, because the digital divide does exist. That said, it is crucial that we reach all stakeholders. And I think that we need to, as our community continues to diversify, look at kind of new ways of reaching those voices that perhaps aren't usually heard, and that may be by holding town halls in the community themselves rather than inviting groups to come into the schools or locations that we choose, places that are comfortable for non-native English speakers, and ensuring that we have interpreters for all of the community groups for the full length of meetings. So again, again, I think it's really reaching out to discover the needs of all of our communities and meeting them where they're at.
Thank you. The second question on community participation is for candidates from Zone 2, beginning with John Sweeney. What would you propose to increase communication between the board and the Portland community?
Well, I think we should do more announcements through the newspapers, because generally speaking, the people who read the newspapers are more aware of what's going on, and it's proven time after time that those who read newspapers are ahead and better informed and would be able to have questionnaires put out through the newspapers that people could respond to and then send them in.
Thank you. Mr. Anthony.
I would agree with some of the comments made earlier, that we need to be availing ourselves of town hall experience and social media, admitting, being honest, that there are significant barriers to access with that, and also, obviously, that we have to be treating people with honesty and with respect. I think that what we are not availing ourselves of now is the principles that we have in every school and the teachers who are parts of our community. We have to have those, be viewing those people as our emissaries. We have to be communicating with them openly and honestly, first of all, because they are the board's eyes and ears, and we are a very limited group of people. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Rusick-Williams.
Well, I think the first thing that we need to do or to realize is that, in order for anyone to hear anything we're saying in the first place, they have to have trust for us. So we need to work on building our relationships and our trust within the community as a start. And then, from that point, in terms of how we get things out to people, I think we have to meet people where they are. And if that's text messaging, if that's Facebook, if that's a newspaper, if it's a school newsletter, neighborhood associations, whatever it takes to meet people where they are. There is a digital divide. Not everybody does have access to computers or text messaging, but not everybody reads the newspaper either. Not everyone checks their mail, as I've discovered. So there are so many different ways. In this day and age, we have absolutely zero excuses for not getting the word out to people. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Gonzalez.
Yes, I totally agree with almost everybody around here. There's some great ideas. Trust and respect are huge items that particularly influence people from communities of color, whose voices aren't often heard because they haven't been engaged to participate. I'd look at more aggressive outreach methods to reach out to the communities, more culturally specific and sensitive approaches, and also look at not your usual suspects in terms of where things are posted or placed. Look for alternative means to connect to different communities.
Thank you. The next pair of questions concerns district budgeting. Everybody's favorite. The first budgeting question is for Zone 2, beginning with Mr. Anthony. The budget reflects district priorities. Would you make changes to the current budget? And if so, please explain.
Thank you. Yes, I would. The budget needs to focus on classrooms. I support the priorities that have been given by the superintendent, but I do not believe that we are doing enough to make sure that those priorities actually come to fruition. We need to improve third-grade reading. In order to do that, we need to put a librarian in every school, have a reading specialist available to every first, second, and third-grade classroom, and we have to be training our teachers to deal with dyslexia. We need to increase our graduation rates. The only way that we will see that is if we put equitable programming into our middle schools and bring back career and technical education. And we have to address exclusionary discipline. We need to be putting restorative justice programs into every classroom. The board needs to focus on funding and actively ensuring implementation of policy.
Thank you. Go ahead, Ms. Williams.
Well, I think the truth is, there's never going to be enough money for our schools. Our kids are always going to deserve more than we can give them. But there are other things we can do, and we know sadly, PPS has some of the lowest amounts spent per student in the country, but there are so many other things that we can do. We can fully utilize all of the federal and state programs that are available to us. We have wraparound programs. We can work within the community and get people together to help support our school systems. Something that I don't know how many people want to talk about right now, but there is a real potential to have a lot of money coming toward us with recreational marijuana. So I'm really curious to see where that's going to take us in the future, because that's, if we look at Colorado and places like that, we have this potential huge income of money coming towards our schools, just like the lottery system. So keep our eyes out on that one. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Gonzalez.
Yes. Well, I agree with Emma that funding for schools has always been, at least in recent history, uncertain, although we seem to be in a little more positive upswing, which allows us to really think about investing more wisely and a little bit more robustly in the programs that will make a difference for our kids. The budget priorities, as laid out and as repeated by Paul here, with regard to the upcoming budget, reducing exclusionary discipline, increasing graduation rates and achievement, and reaching 100% of early childhood literacy by the third grade, I think are absolutely must, and they are forward-moving, and I think we need to continue pushing that envelope to achieve those.
Thank you. Mr. Sweeney.
I think we need to emphasize that the money going into the classroom and allow the teachers to have a lot of personal latitude in how they teach the classes, because the teachers' personalities make a difference on how the subject matter can come across to the students, and the fact that we should capitalize on the smarter students in the classroom to be able to help the students that are dragging behind. That would make the classroom teaching far more interesting. And when I was on the Multnomah Education Service District Board, most of the students that dropped out, then dropped out because they couldn't handle the work, they dropped out because they're bored, and we need to make it more interesting, and that will also make further, better use of our money.
Thank you. Our second budgeting question is for Zones 1 and 3, and we'll start with Zone 1, and we'll start with Mr. Davidson. With the district's plan to rebuild all schools within the next 30 years, what lessons are being learned now that can be used to improve the use of money from future bonds?
That's a great question, and to a certain degree, I don't think the district has answered its own question. You know, what have they actually learned? I would love to see a list of lessons learned from the current bond projects. Personally, what I have found is that we're not prepared with a vision for what we would like our district curriculum to be before building the for what we would like our district curriculum to be before building those schools. So when we're looking at our high schools, you know, how much of an emphasis do we want to place on career technical education? What do we want our arts programs to look like? Do we want more choice in our high schools? We want everything to be the same across the city, you know? And that plays into boundaries issues as well. I think this comes to fruition with a lack of a vision on the board's part. The board has to have a clear vision from all of its members about what they want to see. And so in regards to the bond projects, you know, those are my personal lessons learned, but I think we need to be seriously looking at what the district has learned.
Thank you. Mrs. Parsa Brown?
Okay, thank you. I too believe that it is crucial to have a vision for what the schools in this community are going to, to look like. So they can each have a different focus and be also very attuned to the needs of their community, the community in which those schools exist. So given that, and making decisions through the equity lens, then how are the decisions that we make in terms of the physical spaces that we have going to move, push that increase of outcomes for all students? So I think that we are looking at the, the use of bonds, again, in how we create spaces that allow for all students' access, including kids with disabilities, kids that are English learners, you know? So what kind of structures that might look different across all communities? I don't think that we can have a cookie cutter look that here is the, the structure of a high school building in Portland Public, and they do need to really respond to the community's needs.
Thank you. Moving on to the same question for Zone Three. This, we'll start with Bobby Regan. Do you want to hear the question again?
Sure.
With the district's plan to rebuild all schools within the next 30 years, what lessons are being learned now that can be used to improve the use of money from future bonds?
So first of all, I think we owe an incredible debt of gratitude to our community for stepping up and approving our bond. For stepping up and approving, can you hear me?
Microphone's not on.
Okay. Okay. Can I start again?
There you go. Go ahead.
Okay. So first of all, we owe a debt of gratitude to our community for stepping up and helping us rebuild our schools and our school infrastructure. The board spent many, many, many months after the failure of the 2011 bond, which failed by a half a percentage of point, going back out to the community and discovering exactly what they were looking for. And there was a very high focus on high schools, as well as summer projects that include upgrades at up to 63 schools for seismic safety, accessibility, science labs, that sort of thing. What I think we've learned so far is that partnerships matter. One of the things that we are just now doing is we're adding solar panels on six of our roofs recently. That was a partnership with PGE. It's just so incredibly exciting. And I think as we go forward, partnerships are going to matter even more. One of the things I would recommend is that we do an audit of our three first schools that we're starting out with, so that we know what we did well, what we didn't, and where we could improve. That's going to be a critical piece.
Thank you. Ms. Constan?
First of all, I'd say that I am pleased with the current bond that's in place in terms of the priorities that are contained in it, the focus on high schools. I worked really hard on the superintendent's bond committee and then in service to passing that bond. It was a very healthy community process that identified high schools and the other elements that Bobby just mentioned that are in the 2012 bond. So I think it was strategic. I was among the majority of Portlanders who rejected the prior bond proposal because I don't think it was a strategic combination of what our schools really needed. I think what's really important as we look at addressing 60 years of deferred maintenance on our schools and trying to pass bonds over the next 30 years, that we make smart decisions and our public has confidence in financial oversight. We already have questions with the $26 million overrun at the Franklin Project that the public was not involved in the process of looking at that. That's going to bring great scrutiny to the board on that process.
Thank you. Mr. Sauterback?
We've got the bond, and now let's have a little results. My group has been trying to find out the specifics of what, what are going to be done and how other schools will get involved here. That's 30-year project is great, but the way things change today, they change tomorrow. We seem to have to get away from this one-size-fits-all, one high school, one school, all the same. Things change. Neighborhoods change. We have to change. I don't think we've learned anything on that yet, but we're working on it.
All right. Ms. Hollins?
So I, I am very concerned about the $26 million that was valued, entered, value engineered out of the Franklin High School project. And I think that points to a level of staff dysfunction that needs to be addressed directly by the board. That, that to me is unacceptable, that Franklin was promised an indoor track, which was something that the community was really enthused about, and now that's something that they're not going to get. So one of my main concerns and one of the reasons I'm running for school board is being a person inside facilities, I see, I, I go to too many meetings where it's good news only, where you're not allowed to share any information that might lead to those lessons learned and might prevent the kind of cost overruns that we've seen at, at Franklin going forward.
Thank you. The third round of questions deals with equity. And we'll start with Zone Two, beginning with Ms. Rosick Williams. And here's the question. The district's staffing formula allocates resources based on factors such as socioeconomic status of students and the number of students from historically underserved groups. What are alternatives to this approach that would improve equity across the district?
Well, I think one thing that we're going to be dealing with, whether we want to or not, personally I do, I'm very excited about it, coming up in the next year, is the new district-wide boundary change. To me, this is something that will drastically improve the equity and diversity in our schools. I get actually a lot of pushback on this because I very much believe that in the past, our boundaries have been drawn around race and poverty. A lot of people will disagree with me, but I think it's, I think it's pretty clear. And so that is something that is happening, and I'm really excited to see it happen. So that's going to be something that's going to improve how our, how our schools look in terms of race and, and diversity and equity. And I'm really excited to see that happen. And I've run out of time.
Thank you. Mr. Gonzalez?
Yes. I don't have a problem with the funding formula. It's probably not perfect, and I think can be reexamined and maybe weighted a little heavier on the side of children of color, particularly those in disadvantaged neighborhoods and also with high degrees of poverty in their family. But I don't think it's the only solution. I think we need to work constructively with culturally specific CBOs to assist in bringing those children up to the same level as others who've been more fortunate. So extending and maintaining good partnerships with culturally specific CBOs is one additional solution, not an alternative solution to fostering equity for all the children in the PPS School District.
Thank you. Mr. Sweeney?
Still, the thing is, is putting the money into the classes and having the fact that all students pull together and emphasize to the students the fact that they're not just kids and their job title is student. And their job is to learn, train, and prepare for the future for themselves, their neighborhoods, their families, and society as a whole. And the thing is, is to have them all pulled together. That way, they all succeed together.
Thank you. Mr. Anthony?
I certainly support the equity allocation in the budget. But with Roosevelt's graduation rate at 53%, I think we have to be looking much harder at how effectively those equity dollars are being used. If we want to achieve sustainable, long-term equity that doesn't disappear with a grant cycle, we have to be recruiting minority voices to make real change. We have to address disproportionate discipline. I've been working closely with the Portland Parent Union, coming up with a new, recommendations for a new student discipline handbook. We have to be addressing the inequities in middle school programming, particularly at our K8s. Thank you.
Thank you.
And we have to be making greater and more equitable access to immersion programs and other hands-on learning opportunities. Those are things that we know improve results.
Thank you. The next question on equity is for Zones One and Three. We will begin with Zone Three and Ms. Carlson-Constan. The superintendent's priority for reducing racial disparity is focused on decreasing suspensions and expulsions. How would you balance this against other ways of addressing racial inequality? Or inequity, rather. Excuse me.
Well, looking generally at the issue of equity that the other candidates were talking about, to me, one of the most important things is making sure that we have equity in our offerings for all of our students. So that means having full curric, robust curriculum and full enrollment at all of our schools that, which I think is at the heart of many of our disparities. I also would go back and look at really strong partnerships with our early childhood providers so that we don't have a racial achievement gap that starts at kindergarten. I think the district can do more in bridging that gap. But in terms of the disparate discipline, which I, I completely agree should be a main focus of the district, that we see with restorative justice, we see processes that work in terms of making sure that there's, that there's equal conversations around discipline with students. With Open Meadow that I work with, we have zero disparity in our disciplinary procedures. So it takes more time. It's, but it's eventually the only thing that will work in terms of keeping all kids in school.
Thank you. Mr. Sauterback?
Well, you know, what's, what's equal? What's equity? You know, we're, we talk this around and throw it around and, and it's like Jimmy Carter said, you know, things aren't fair. They aren't equal either, I'll tell you. We have a situation where a school with the highest graduation rate gets put on a chopping block. I'm talking about Benson High School. It's got the, one of the highest poverty rates, but it's also got one of the highest graduation rates. So I don't know how, what equality is there. Why is that school being eliminated? On the other hand, we got, it's comparable to Lincoln, that's the district I'm in, which has the highest level.
Thank you. I'll have to stop you. Ms. Hollins?
So I think I can answer your question. We have a saying at the district that equal means everyone has shoes and equity means everyone has shoes that fit. And I fully support the district, the superintendent's goal to reduce disproportionate discipline. And I think the steps that have been taken are, are appropriate. The restorative justice, having attendance monitors in schools and having the early warning signs. This is a, a new staff position. My concern is around the management of these new programs, making sure that we are setting targets for results and asking staff to come back and update the board on whether or not the new positions are working, if they're achieving their, their targets. But I fully support the equity work. It's, it's transformative.
Thank you. Ms. Regan?
Hi. The three highest goals we have at this point in the district are the third grade reading, getting kids to graduate on time, and then reducing out-of-school suspensions and expulsions. And I'm very supportive of all of those efforts. In terms of out-of-school suspensions and expulsions, the reason it's such a disaster is when kids are out of school, they're not learning. And I think we all need to recognize, I mean, the League of Women Voters just did this report about children at risk. 40% of our children in Oregon today are at risk. When a child is acting out in school, oftentimes they're calling out for help. So we can look at it as they're being difficult, or we can look at it as an opportunity to better support them. One of the things that we are adding into the budget next year will be a full-time counselor in every single one of our schools. I am so excited that we're finally adding that support back, that we're able to add that support back.
Thank you. Moving with the same question to Zone One, and beginning with Mr. Davidson.
Thank you. I completely support the equity work. And I think trying to address disproportionate discipline is a fantastic idea. My concern, however, is that in our quest to end disproportionate discipline, we're not actually ending disproportionate discipline. We're ending the fact that it's tracked and recorded. So are students still having disruption problems in classes? Are those being addressed? How are they being addressed? We've seen issues across this district, even this last year, in schools where students are having alternative methods of disciplinary enforcement that we know can be just as harmful for kids as excluding them from the classroom. We have to be looking at what the impact truly is for kids and how they're interacting with the system.
Thank you. Mrs. Parsa Brown?
Great, thank you. We need a plan. We need a plan in order to reduce those disparities, and that would be through a system-wide appropriate framework that would focus on teaching positive behaviors rather than punishing misbehavior. Because oftentimes, you know, children just need new models and new ways of reacting. It's been mentioned earlier that sometimes children's discipline certainly can come from the, things that happen at home. By having more community partnerships to provide those wraparound services, we can also be proactive in providing really the foundation for their learning at school and good behavior. We also need professional development in how we take that data of who is getting referred and disciplined and disaggregated by subgroups so that we're keeping track then, that we are looking equitably across our discipline approaches.
Thank you. Our next question will be starting again, will be again for Zones One and Three. And we'll start with Zone One, and this is a question from the audience. It's a long question. Over the next three years, Portland Public Schools will ask the public to support them during three major processes: boundary review, a school bond, and teacher contract negotiations. What will you do through these processes to build back the trust and goodwill and put our system on track for success for all families? Starting with you.
Okay. Great. Yes. Well, I believe that to build trust requires good communication. And good communication requires active listening of all stakeholders. And so it'd be really important, again, to do our outreach and our due diligence to getting the voices of all stakeholders in those processes. It's crucial that we restore trust between the groups such as the teachers working with us because they are at the center of the work that we do. And again, I think really listening, providing opportunities for dialogue and being as transparent as possible in our dialogue and our decisions is going to go a long ways at helping us rebuild that trust. But at the center of it is respectful, active listening.
Thank you. Mr. Davidson?
Thank you. I agree. I think it starts with being open and honest with our community. I think the other part of that is being in our community, talking to people regularly. You know, regularly scheduled town halls just aren't enough. We need our board members out, talking to people all the time about the issues, hearing from regular people, not just representatives from different organizations, but regular people, parents, students, teachers, and just general community members. That's going to be critical to our work in the next few years. We have some big asks of our community. And we have to be prepared for, you know, showing them that we have our best intentions in mind and we're looking out for students. We have a long way to go, but we have to work on that. You know, working responsibly is going to be key to our, to our future as well. We have to make sure that we're not just, you know, telling them that they can trust us, that we're making the decisions that they truly can in the future as well. Thank you.
Thank you. The same question for Zone Three, beginning with Mr. Sauterback?
Well, nothing succeeds like success, so you want to build the confidence in the system, we need to, we need to have something that succeeds. If the bonding issue produces high school repairs that are meaningful, that'll help. All these programs that work, let's get them out, tell the community, gee, what a good folks we are, we did this. And the communities- And the community's going to respond. That's why we got the money to rebuild the high schools. The community is out there just waiting. All we have to do is to show them that we can do it.
Thank you. Ms. Hollins.
Wow, so those are three very different things. Collective bargaining with our frontline service providers, the heart of our whole mission, our teachers, repairing that relationship after the last very contentious contract negotiation is very important to me. I really, I feel like there have been, there were good strides made in this, in the contract, but I feel like the process was not one that the public was engaged in and didn't walk away understanding what happened. And I think, again, we can communicate more strongly with that. With the bond, I think we simply need to be scaled down to goals that we can accomplish and then prove that we are accountable to those goals. The D-BRAC is going to be a painful process because our schools are overcrowded, and that's going to be a more difficult one to take feedback on. I think the board just needs to step up and make some hard decisions.
Thank you. Ms. Regan.
So generally speaking, I think some of the best ways for us to be out in the community and getting input is through things like town hall meetings, things like school visits. And one of the areas that I have enjoyed the most with the community is when we were doing our two different superintendent searches over the years, and we actually went out and did listening sessions where literally the board would listen to the community talking about the issue and then kind of parrot back what we heard. And that felt meaningful to the community because they could really tell that we had heard what they were saying. On the teacher contract, I have great hope, actually, because since our last teacher contract, we actually have several different work groups now of Portland Public Schools and PAT in terms of, you know, workload committees and assessments, the teacher evaluation, all of that. So I'm actually very hopeful in that arena, and I think we just need to have to constantly be talking to each other before bargaining.
Thank you. Ms. Carlson-Konstam.
I think with the boundary review process, first and foremost, we need to have a decision-making process that doesn't just absorb input from the community, but really integrates it into the decision-making. And that the process for making those difficult decisions about potentially changing boundaries is clear so that the public doesn't suspect that they're subjective decisions that are being made. I also think with boundary review, we need to get some other important issues in order before we even look at boundaries. We need to see if we have the right number of schools, if our enrollment is balanced, if we have the right configuration of schools in terms of elementary and middle. We need to get those elements in place before looking at boundaries. With the bond, I think the most important thing is to show the public that there's good financial management of the current bond. And with our teacher contract, I think we need to really focus on movement that clearly benefits students in the classroom and shows support for our teachers in the classroom, and that that's where we want to make movement in the contract.
Thank you. Our next question from the audience, which will come to Zone two, and beginning with Mr. Gonzalez. Questions from our audience tonight show concerns from TAG and special ed families in meeting the needs of their children. What can the district do to engage those parents and meet the needs of those students?
Well, when I started our company years ago, one of the things that we discovered is that people were often left out of the conversation or participation because they weren't invited. So I think the first thing is to make sure people are invited and they're welcome and they're treated with respect and the dignity they deserve, that they're given an opportunity to speak about the issues that they're concerned about and they're listened to, and that somehow it's very transparent that what they've said is actually, that there are results that come from that. This is probably where I would start in terms of first learning about what the issues are specifically, and then formulating decisions about how to address them in the most positive manner possible.
Thank you. Mr. Sweeney.
I was on the Multlimed Education Service District Board years ago, and the TAG program, Talented Gifted Program, started up. And this is, at the time, they figured was the top 2% of the students. And this is, TAG program should be expanded because it, again, it makes school more interesting and contributes to the fact that if it's more interesting, more students are going to hang in with the schools and graduate. So it's, the thing is, what we want to do is, the TAG program, is to expand it as much as possible.
Thank you. Mr. Anthony.
In reaching out to TAG and special ed parents, again, it's absolutely critical that we treat them with honesty and respect and build trust. We have to go to the community, particularly communities of color and communities whose primary language is other than English. It's our job to get to them. But yes, I absolutely agree that TAG is critical for keeping students engaged and improving results. If we do not keep students engaged, we know they're going to tune out, turn off, and we are going to lose them. And for special ed, we have to remember that behavior is communication, and we have to ask what children are trying to say as discipline problems become more difficult.
Thank you. Ms. Rustic-Williams.
I think the first thing that we need to do is to make sure that these parents and the students all know that they are heard, that we hear them, they are not forgotten, they are a very valuable part of our schools and of our communities, whether that's TAG students or special ed students, they're still our students. And these are still our parents that we, and our guardians that we need to reach out with and engage with. I've said this before tonight, but I'll say it again, we need to meet them where they are, just like we need to meet all of our students and all of our parents in our community where they are. We need to find out what it is that's important to the students, what's important to their parents, and we need to make every effort we can to meet those needs for them. So, thank you.
Thank you. Our next question, question five, we'll start with Zone three and start with Ms. Hollins from the audience. Last year, relations between Portland Public Schools and its teachers reached a historic low with teachers one day away from a strike. How will you work with teachers collaboratively toward a shared goal of creating the schools our students deserve?
Yes, that was not good. So I'm married to a teacher, and we had lots of lively discussions at home. So I think one of the, my primary concerns is that the teacher's contract is really difficult to read. It's certainly not written in plain English, and I think that the superintendent is working right now with the PAT to make strides so that both PAT members and the Human Resources Department understand what the language in the contract means, what the implications are for the classrooms. So I would like to see more of that education happening. And more education in terms of making the public aware of the points that are being, that are being discussed. Sometimes it's because the collective bargaining process happens so quietly and in the dark, I think that we can really set the stage beforehand by talking about the specific areas of the contract and making the policies that flow from those contract language clear to everyone involved.
Thank you. Ms. Regan.
So I would agree that it was a pretty difficult and stressful year for everybody involved, and that's not just our teachers and the board members, but it's all of our students and families. There is nothing worse than when we are doing this with our teachers' union and we're, you know, seeming to be locked in battle. So I think the first thing we need to do is we need to not look at it as a teacher's contract, we need to look at it as our contract. This is our contract, and it basically sets forth the, you know, the working conditions that are going to be in the schools, and those working conditions should support our teachers to be effective in the classroom with our kids. So one of the things that I'm excited about is the fact that our budget is getting a little bit better. I think we are going to be able to continue to hopefully lower class sizes and provide more supports to our teachers in the classroom. Even what we're doing already in terms of the budget this year, adding a counselor, adding library support, adding front office support, all of those things are going to help our teachers in the classroom support our kids better. So we just need to be communicating.
Thank you.
More.
Ms. Carlson-Konstam.
I think one of the most important things is to establish an ongoing dialogue between our union and the district that really brings us closer in terms of understanding one another's perspectives and so that we don't arrive at contract negotiations as a sort of episodic dispute as we have seen in the past. And I think that when the district approaches contract negotiations, it should really be informed by the values that are expressed by the community about what differences do we want to see on behalf of our students. I agree with Gretchen that it was, is a laudable goal to simplify our contract. It's incredibly, it's much more dense and complex than most of contracts in the state. So if we can distill to meaningful terms what are the most important issues to students in the classroom, I think that will be a benefit. I also, we saw in the last contract negotiation that the district set aside one of their top priorities, the third grade reading initiative, because the negotiations themselves were so, were so overwhelming that they couldn't conduct the business of the district. That's not fair for kids.
Thank you. Mr. Soderback.
Well, now, I'm a third-generation union man, and what we have in public collective bargaining is different from conventional collective bargaining elsewhere. So it's an experiment that's evolving. It will be interesting whether it survives or it doesn't. But collective bargaining is just that. Both sides must bargain. And in the late, last fiasco, I did not feel that either side, the teachers or the school district, were bargaining collectively.
Thank you. Mr. Davidson, same question.
Thank you. I think the first step to this is having a board who's knowledgeable about what's going on in the classrooms, what teaching conditions are actually like. And that means that you have to be involved before you start negotiating the contract. You have to know what people are going to come forward with, what the teachers are going to want. I think that you also need to have that respectful negotiating style in place. Now, people are going to fault both sides for the last round of contract negotiations, but the fact is, as a board member, I can't control what's going on at the teachers' union. I can only control what's going on here in PPS. So I can say that we're going to communicate honestly, openly with the public. The board members are going to be in frequent conversations with the community about where they're at. Last contract negotiations were horrible. I sat on the board through that. It was not a pleasant experience for me, and it wasn't a pleasant experience as a student. But we're seeing problems with the previously bargained contract right now, and that shouldn't have been the case, and we have to be communicating honestly and negotiating honestly.
Thank you. Ms. Parsa-Brown.
Great. I think that the issues in the contract, when they come up at time for negotiation, shouldn't be a surprise. And so by having that ongoing and open dialogue, then we are, you know, are understanding what the bargaining points are, knowing what we expect of teachers and knowing the values of what our community wants of teachers and what we're willing to give is crucial. But we do want the best-trained teachers in Portland to have all of our kids achieve the highest possible. So again, that means supporting them in the way that they need to be supported, and that is by a strong contract. I am a teacher trainer, and I'm in schools every day, and right now I see that our teachers don't have the tools that they need to teach the kids. If they're missing some basic pieces in the toolkit, then how can we do them to ask a job? It's impossible. So it's really coming together to look at children in the center, and how are we going to both work towards providing what everybody needs to give the kids what they deserve.
Thank you. Our next question will be for Zone two, starting with Mr. Sweeney. Should we continue to offer K eight schools in some areas and middle schools in others? How should the district make this determination?
When I went through Portland Public Schools, it was a K eight system, and it worked real well. Then it appears they had some extra money, so they dreamed up the middle school system, and you had extra people, extra money going into administration and not in the classroom. I think you should all be K through eight.
Thank you. Mr. Anthony.
I do not think that the current system is remotely equitable or sustainable. K eights and middle schools can produce equitable results, but only if they are equally resourced. And our K eights, given the physical realities of the size of the buildings, cannot possibly give the same level of programming. We are seeing very inequitable results falling out into graduation rates in parts of Portland that have K eights, and I think we absolutely have to move away from that. We are not going to be able to do a successful boundary redraw until we've solved that question. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Rustic-Williams.
So I've actually thought about this a lot because the school that my son will go to is a K eight, and honestly, I wasn't really familiar with what that was until I discovered that's what my son would go to. So I've done a lot of research on it, and I think I've come to the conclusion that it does need to change. I think the research shows that middle schools do have more access to electives and better programming and the sort of thing that, that I find really important, music and art and language and that kind of thing. I think additionally, we have to look at developmental issues in children. Having a school that's five years old, four or five years old to 12 or 13 years old, the difference in where those kids are and what they need from their teachers, what they need emotionally, what they need from their peers, is so vast that I think the idea of breaking that up makes a lot of sense, and I'd like to see that happen.
Thank you. Mr. Gonzalez.
Yes, my understanding is that the current system was somewhat developed as a response to inadequate funding and issues of declining enrollment. And so adjustments were being made over the years to try to provide the best resources and situation possible. I think perhaps as we see enrollment increasing now and hopefully continuing to grow, and we also see a more, a more stable financial picture for the school district, that we can perhaps reexamine this situation and determine what the right model is for our kids. I agree with Emma that, and I went through a junior high school, which is essentially a middle school kind of program, that the kids in junior high school are a little different in terms of where they are. And perhaps, you know, getting focused there will give them a leg up and give them a better opportunity to succeed in high school as we move on forward.
Thank you. You all are doing such a great job keeping to time that we have time for one more question. And I will ask the same question of everyone. And here it is. And we will start with Zone two and start with Mr. Anthony. Do you think our schools should put less emphasis on standardized testing? If so, what do you believe is the best way to assess student achievement?
We absolutely need to know what programs and schools are successful, but there are much better tests for assessing student achievement than what we have. I have a long history of opposing high-stakes standardized tests. I believe that they are a tool that further oppresses marginalized communities. We need to challenge students and prepare them for success. The best ways for assessing are portfolio work, grade point average, and graduation We know that standardized tests are such a poor predictor of further success in college and in life that more than 60 U.S. American colleges and universities have stopped accepting the SAT as an entrance requirement. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Rosak Williams.
Well, parents, students, and teachers are clearly unhappy with current testing models. I don't think anybody would disagree with that. However, I also truly believe nobody is anti-assessment and anti-standards. The problem lies in the imbalance of instruction versus assessment versus resources. So, we already know that Portland Public Schools have some of the fewest instruction days in the nation, and I think taking up a, potentially up to a third more of that time away to prepare for tests does not improve our students' achievement or indicate how well our teachers can teach. So I feel like we need to find a healthy balance between learning, between assessing, and quite frankly, with fun. I think we've taken away a lot of the fun from our students, and we need to bring that back. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Gonzalez.
Well, as a student, I never met a test that I liked. So, I know you know where I stand on that. I certainly agree that less testing is better, but better testing is better yet. So, right now, I know there's a significant amount of controversy around smart balanced assessment test. I'm in favor of taking the test, and I'll tell you why. Basically, we've adopted a Common Core standards, and we've designed curriculum to address those standards. Those standards, we believe, are going to give our children the best chance for success in the future, and we need to have a mechanism to determine whether or not we're doing the job. So, like I said, I don't like tests as a rule, but in certain circumstances, it's the best means that we have for determining whether or not we're doing the job that we set out to do.
Thank you. Mr. Sweeney.
I think the standardized test is a good measure, and it works both ways. When I went to the Oregon Military Academy Officer Candidate School to become a Second Lieutenant in the Army National Guard, one of the things about the test that everybody took, which was standard, proved on how well the students were doing. Also, it showed in some areas where the instructors didn't get the information across. So it was given opportunity to make corrections, so the fact that some of the instructions was failing, and it could be corrected so that the students could do better.
Thank you. Ms. Asparza Brown.
Great. I am not in favor of high-stakes testing, and one of the big issues is that we know that they are not appropriate predictors of potential and success and achievement in many communities of color and kids with disabilities. Also, high-stakes testing shouldn't be used as the single measure to make decisions on children, and also, we're using them now more to evaluate program success, the success of teachers and schools and students. Now, assessment rather than testing is incredibly important in an educational system. We need to be doing ongoing assessment, not using one single measures for the decisions, but ongoing assessments such as curriculum-based measures and other authentic measures. That can be given frequently to really keep track and guide the instruction across the year of all children. So this should be an assessment package, sort of a puzzle of assessments that together help us inform where children are at and the kinds of achievement and improvements that they're making.
Thank you. Mr. Davidson.
Thank you. I agree that assessment is critical, but I think that work samples are a much more effective way of measuring student achievement in this case, in what they've learned rather than standardized test scores. And when I talk about achievement, I really, one thing that bothers me actually is when we say achievement and mean test scores, because when I'm talking about achievements, I'm talking about the things that are actual achievements in a child's life. Graduating from high school, finding a career that they're passionate and well-prepared for, and becoming a fully functioning member of their community. Those are the kinds of things I'm looking for, and I don't think a standardized test measures that. You know, the treatment of students is really important when we talk about high-stakes standardized tests. When a child leaves a classroom crying after spending days on a test, you know, when they cross their graduation stage in order of their test score, that's completely inappropriate. And we have to be looking at the impact this is having on students, not just in the, you know, making decisions for programs, schools, or teachers, but also the impact it's having on them as individuals.
Thank you. Moving over to Zone Three, Ms. Regan.
Hi. There was a presentation a little while ago at a board meeting, and it was a presentation of the PAT, Portland Public Schools Assessment Work Group. And Gwen Sullivan, the president, said, "Teachers created assessments. They created tests." But they created them for all the right reasons originally, which is to inform instruction, to see whether or not you're actually, the student is actually understanding the material that you're learning. So that's the right kind of an assessment. It's formative assessment, interim assessments. The standardized tests are not in any way showing us growth. It's a point in time for a student, and, you know, you get it back four months later. You're not going to be able to use it in any helpful way in terms of changing instruction going forward. So I was very proud of the board for taking a very strong position with the state in terms of the smarter balanced test and saying that it absolutely positively can't be used for punitive reasons or to evaluate or shame teachers or students.
Thank you. Ms. Carlson-Konstantin.
I think when we're talking about testing and looking at testing instruments, the most important thing is that the testing not interfere with the students' learning. And these are the concerns that we're seeing raised now with smarter balance, and particularly with the amount of time that it may be taking for students in the classroom. That said, I think most teachers tell us that they have the assessment tools that they need in their classrooms to help them differentiate their teaching for each of their students. And so it's a question of how do we create tests that help us gauge how our system is doing? I agree with Bobby that it's a wise move on the state of Oregon this year that we have some flexibility around the implementation of our testing to see where our kids are relative to Common Core standards, but we absolutely need to make sure that we know how our students are doing relative to students in other states, countries, and that we can retool our system to give them what they need to succeed.
Thank you. Ms. Hollins.
So I think we're talking about two different things, and I want to be clear that tests, the summative tests are used for measuring, for teacher evaluations, and I think that it's wrong to give students the job, the burden of supervising our staff. That's what our principals and our PAT need to be doing, so I am not in favor of summative testing. I think that parents, principals, and teachers are in charge of student learning, and they are the best people to do the formative assessments, the interim assessments, that tell a teacher where instruction needs to be adjusted throughout this school year. So, it's, testing is one measure of student achievement. Like I said earlier, it's not reflective of the many qualities that we hope our students learn in school, how to get along with people who are different than you are, how to be a good citizen, how to handle conflict, how to contribute to your society. These are all equally important measures of how well you'll do when you graduate.
Thank you. Mr. Soderback.
As has been pointed out, we're sort of committed to testing. I don't see what the big fuss is. Everything I've done in life, somebody else got to test me for it. And I don't know any other way, whether it's the teacher or the student, to evaluate what's going on and take a test, even though it's for your own benefit. Give yourself a test. So, testing is an essential part of learning. It's the end of learning at that time. How well did you do? Not so well. Maybe you have to step back. I don't, as an employer, I see people come cruising in the door that can't write their own name. I'm sorry, I can't hire you. We need the testing.
All right. Thank you all very much. That was a lot of questions. We will conclude our forum with a one-minute closing statement from each candidate. We'll go in the same order that we did at the beginning, beginning with Ms. Asparza Brown from Zone One.
Thank you. As a lifelong educator, I have been a bilingual teacher, a special education teacher, and a school psychologist, and have worked my life on creating equitable systems for all children, and particularly those that have historically been underserved. As a teacher trainer, I have raised millions of dollars at Portland State to prepare bilingual and teachers of color for the Portland region and across the state. As a professor in special education now, I focus on training teachers to be the best they can to serve the needs of all students. With the background that I have also as a national consultant, I want to bring those vast experiences here to help us then change the outcomes for all kids here. It's urgent. We don't have time to waste. We have to get every kid graduating and everybody literate. I have the knowledge, I have the leadership, and the experience, and the passion and the commitment to do that. So please vote for me, Zone One. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Davidson.
Thank you. I'd like to thank you all for being here tonight and for listening to all of us. I think most of us could talk longer than a minute on all these topics, but I really appreciate the opportunity to do even that. I think it's very clear that the board needs a vision moving on. We need a board who's going to be able to attack these issues with energy, passion, knowledge, and simply the focus on students, which I think has been lost for a lot of people. We need a board that won't be criticized for conflicts of interest in the media. We need a board who's solely focused on making this district a better place for students and the city to have a better future. That's what this comes down to. Education is going to be the cornerstone of Portland's future. So when people are voting in this election, truly, they're determining the future of the city. And I would highly encourage them to remember that, you know, age is not indicative of experience, and that these issues, while complicated, are not unsolvable. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Gonzalez.
Thank you very much. I come from the world of theater, or as Stanislavski described it, "The social art par excellence." The theaters where I found my calling, practiced my craft, and learned how to work with others to achieve common goals. That's the kind of spirit that I would bring to working on the PPS Board, is a collaborative spirit, one where we can achieve great things in commune. Currently, I'm being endorsed by the Coalition of Communities of Color for Just Oregon, Stand for Children, and I would like to see us maximize on this opportunity that we have right now to change the direction of the PPS School District more positively so that it can benefit our children and, like Andrew said, benefit society as well, because that's why we do it.
Thank you. Mr. Sweeney.
Thank you all for being here, and again, my emphasis is increasing the high school graduation rate because it makes a difference in how our society works, because finishing high school is the key to the success of our young people, and the deal is, they're the ones that might be pushing us around in the old folks home later on. And also, I want to change the way they elect the board of directors, the fact that whether you live in a district, the fact that you run in a district, so that you could go door-to-door in a more practical manner, and in fact, it will lower the cost of election.
Thank you. Mr. Anthony.
Thank you. I am and will continue to be very focused on the future of our children, our schools, and our city. I grew up in a town where the local economy was contracting, businesses and industry were shutting down, and school levies and bonds regularly failed. It was a city that had given up on its future. We cannot let that happen to Portland. I don't want to spend the last decades of my life waiting for my children to come home visiting from New York, Chicago, and Atlanta. The only way we will have a healthy city with a healthy economy is if we have strong, healthy, vital public schools. I'm going to use my experience with organizations across Portland to pull the PPS Board into a collaborative relationship with its community. We need a district that welcomes public participation, particularly from its marginalized communities, and that works with people from the neighborhoods, trades, businesses, and community organizations to create more meaningful, relevant, engaging education, and make our schools, again, the centers of our neighborhoods.
Thank you. Ms. Rosak Williams.
Well, the first thing I'd like to say is I'm sorry for all of this coughing that I've been doing up here. I have a one-year-old, and he just brings home everything, so thank you for your patience as I've coughed through everybody's thing. But my journey with Portland Public Schools is just beginning. I have a young child who will soon be going to school. So Portland Public Schools matter to me now, but they'll also matter to me two decades from now, when my children are still in school. I have a long future ahead of me with the Portland Public Schools. And couple that with the many, many years that I've spent working in the local government. I have years of experience on boards and working with elected officials, and that experience all comes together to bring sort of the perfect balance of invested parent, thoughtful community member, and experienced public servant. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Soderback.
Gee, I sit here, and it's all gloom and doom, and everything's coming to an end, and we've got to have this and that and the other thing. I don't see it that way. We have some of the finest students coming out of Portland, anywhere in the world. The problem is, we just don't have enough of them, and we need to make a better effort. The communities out there is going to help us. I see myself as a public member of the board, not a education insider that I have some program that I'm trying to push. And all we need to do, the board, and many of them will be elected here, is to just get with the program. Do these things that we know work. Don't do the things that don't work. And we can return this school system back to the way it was when I went here, when the rest of them went here, when that young man went here. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Hollins.
So I'm Gretchen Hollins. I'm deeply invested in our public schools. My children went to PPS schools. I was volunteer. Went back to school to get my degree in public administration so I could work in the schools, and I've worked in the schools for seven years. As part of my work, I manage the moves and the furniture inventory, so I've visited all 78 schools. I know the 102 programs. I've visited every site because everybody needs a chair. I commiserate with the principals, I have coffee with the custodians, and I can tell you why Sunnyside has chickens and why Lane Middle School wants Head Start. I know our schools, I know our policies, I hold people accountable, and I work efficiently within our limited budget every day. You should elect me because I will be a great board member. I'm running my campaign off my dining room table, and only half, the other half has a jigsaw puzzle. I don't believe that you need a lot of personal wealth or political connections. I'm not sending you direct mail flyers. If you think that my experience and skill set will benefit our schools, please vote for me. I'm Gretchen Hollins. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Regan.
Hi, my two sons graduated from Portland Public Schools. I believe in public education, and I believe that every Portland Public School student with the right supports can graduate ready for college, career, and the future. Portland Public Schools increased our graduation rate 17% in the last five years. I challenge us to repeat this during the next five, driving our graduation rate to 90%. I will work with the new board majority and our community to get there. We can do this. I'm proud to have been endorsed by hundreds of parents and individual teachers. They know our schools and kids best, and I'm proud to have the endorsement of the Portland Association of Teachers and many elected leaders who care about schools, including Governor Barbara Roberts, Congresswoman Suzanne Bonamici, Mayor Charlie Hales, the entire city council, and many more. Recently, a woman stopped me on the street and told me she sees me as a force for good. I hope you see this too, and I ask for your vote.
Thank you. Ms. Carlson-Konstantin.
So one of the things that I think is really special about Portland is the value that we have around public education, and it's almost our common denominator as a community. People with kids in school, people whose kids have long graduated, the 80% of people who don't have students in public school now still feel very invested in having a strong and equitable public education system. I'm running to bring greater leadership, better decision-making, and common sense to the school board to ensure stronger schools and better results for kids. While we all share a common value about public education, I think you're hard-pressed to find people in this community now who are satisfied with the status quo. People still scratch their heads when they read the results about our graduation rate, about our achievement gap. It doesn't jive with our sense of our own values in Portland. I'll take action and lead the board in investing in what works for kids. We see other districts get better results. I think we can restore PPS to being a district that's fiscally responsible, innovative in its educational offerings, and open and responsive to parents. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you all. That's all the time we have. We thank and have applauded for all of the candidates for participating in our forum and for choosing to run for the school board. It is an immense, time-consuming, four-year volunteer job. Thank you again to our partners and volunteers without whom this forum would not have been possible. Please check the League of Women Voters of Portland website, l w v p d x dot org, for the broadcast times for this forum, for our impartial voter's guide, and additional election information. Also, visit fouroneone.org. I'm almost done. Please share these resources with your family, your friends, and your colleagues. There are very important items on our May 19 ballot. This is Debbie Kay for the League of Women Voters of Portland. Thank you for watching our candidate forum. Please be an informed voter and make your vote count. Thank you.[1768.36][1768.36]